So it's a split rate process?
Pretty much.
Well, I probably have a major business. I already have tested, but he's become 500. I just think.
You.
Perfect. I knew there were the Chiefs and the Saints. So I heard that in the world.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Well, then they said that we're trying to get some DNC. It's a lot of dollars. They are for the. There are two months. I hope that she calls.
She's she's present.
Hmm?
She's. Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
She lives. And they started all kind of. And she was. And all that. They built them up. Always.
I could have been. Yeah.
I did first.
To recommendation to one point seven. Uh, in keeping with the uh, uh, the adaptation by our neighboring municipality and Saint John. Um, so that that answers that question, but I'd also like to raise another point. That's just my opinion. But I'd like to raise another point that the letter from the minister also refers to, we had a question about levy tourism levy. And in his letter that I received just at the meeting today, which is an hour ago, and I've read it once. But, uh, you know, as part of the ongoing contract, that's the uh, uh, with the envision Saint John, all parties to the agreement are to put in place and remit accommodation. This is a quote. Uh, as part of the ongoing contract, all parties to the agreement are to put in place and remit accommodation levy for tourism promotion and development use. To that end, Saint John has a number of priority projects for which they would like to use some of that funding. And Envision is prepared to consider those. So here again, we've got revenue that is basically owned by all members of that agreement that is being infiltrated by one member for their advantage. I don't, I don't agree with it. And, uh, and, and I'll go back again, I'm jumping back and forth, but I might as well say what I'm thinking. The, um, the capital, the capital costs, we have no structure in place that puts limitations on annual capital costs. And so that's going to be all over the place. And over the next five years, I think was suggested seventeen million or something like that would be spent. Was that seventeen million?
Over ten mil.
Yeah.
Seventeen million over ten.
Yeah.
Seventeen.
Next five years, it's like an extra eleven million versus what they.
I mean, it's millions with no control on it. So, I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's scary to think of what we're just kind of, uh, uh, signing here as sort of a blank check in a lot of, in a lot of ways. So anyway, that's, uh, that's just some points I wanted to raise.
Thank you, Counselor Olson, and yes, that letter did just come in this afternoon. Uh, Ms. Brandon.
Uh, three year worship to with the, um, originally when administration proposed the budget, we had the one point seven included in the budget. Uh, during our budget deliberations, it was changed to the one point five five. So the, the amount, um, related to that change is about a hundred, well, it is a hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars. Um, so just, just so that everyone had the information about the value that we're talking about with Counselor, um, Olson's motion.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Stryer, please.
Uh, thank you, your worship. I, I just wanted to speak to, um, the, uh, ratio in, um, the last meeting. I realized that we had voted at the one point five five without the new information, but I would like to, um, stress again, I, I really don't think this is the time to be looking for, um, increasing the ratio. And there's a lot of reasons why, um, I believe that our businesses are, that we don't have a lot of in Quispam sis. We know it only represents four percent of our, our, um, um, taxation. However, you know, it's been a rough few years. And, um, when their, their prices go up, so that gets passed on to the consumer. So it's, it's a vicious circle. It's not like, uh, okay, we're going to raise your taxes and they're going to swallow it all. Some of them have the ability to pass it on. Others don't have the ability to pass it on because they're subject to regulations through the provincial government. Uh, the other part is, is it's just one big pot now. We do not have categories which state land, vacant land, um, industrial, uh, apartment buildings. It just goes into one big pot. We know that, um, the housing, we hear every day about the housing crisis. So we just say, okay, well, unfortunately apartment building owners, you're, you're in the same pot. There's no division, uh, to be able to say, okay, let's maybe look at something different for our apartment builder owners. Let's maybe look at something different for people that own vacant land that have no services whatsoever. We have no control and that concerns me. So I'm very comfortable with the one point five five. I want to sit for at least one year. We're going through a complete transition with the new regional facilities court or, um, commission. We don't know what's going to come out at the other end. And I feel to be fair to our residential plus our small businesses in the community that we've come up previously with a good, good, um, budget. One hundred and sixty-three thousand, I know it's not a large amount, but it is if you're a small business owner. That difference in your assessment and then a, additional in the taxes could make a huge difference in whether you keep your doors open or not. So I would like to stick with the one point five five as we discussed in the last meeting. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Stryer. I will go now to Counselor Miller. Uh, I believe you were talking about this, you brought this up to go from one point five five. Deputy Mayor Stryer has said she would like to keep it. And Counselor Olson has said that he would rescind his motion from the last meeting to bring it to one point five five from, from one point five. So Counselor Miller, please.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Um, so the, the difference between the one recent, this is my personal comment. So at one point five five, we did it based on what we knew at the time the province was, was dropping their rate. If we would have gone to one point seven at the time in October, the twenty-fifth, we would actually be charging our non-residential more than they actually pay now. So they would actually have gone up because they were only getting a partial rebate from the province with another partial coming later on. And that's why also the, the province is reducing how they pay us money. They're basically saying you get it yourself versus them, them giving it to us. Um, so the difference between going to one point five five to a one point seven is the, uh, the non-residential would still pay about a cent less than they paid last year and sixteen cents less than they paid in twenty twenty-one, where the residence changes have gone down almost six cents. If you were also looking at two variations, so you, you've got two option, you've got many options, we do whatever we want. Um, if you wanted to keep the exact same value that we agreed to on October, the twenty-fifth, you would go to a one point six four, which would be about roughly a hundred and ten thousand dollars, give or take. Um, I, when I did my math, maybe I'm wrong, but one point six four is about, is about that. And so then you have an op, if you want to keep the exact same tax rate, you go to one six four or, and that would give you a hundred and ten, so you could either drop the tax rate again by about a half a cent, which is then again a savings for everybody. Or you could put it towards your debt or you could do it reserves. If you go to the one point seven seven, that one sixty-three nine, so one sixty-four is closer to a, a point seven tax rate, give or take. I'm just doing quick math in my head. Um, again, so you could either put against the tax rate, you could put it against the borrowing, you could put it against the reserve, you could do, do whichever. Uh, but if you wanted to keep it whole, and I'm looking at the treasurer, she's got a math calculator here, whether it's one point six four or one point six three seven or.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. Ms. Brandon, please, Town Treasurer.
Um, okay, so if it, to go from the one point five five to the one point seven, that's a hundred and sixty-three thousand nine seventeen. In, um, some of the changes that we've done previously, we did decrease our reserves by about a hundred and twenty-three thousand six forty-nine this year during our budget deliberations to what we would have put into our reserve, um, normally. If we, you know, either put the one sixty-three nine seventeen into reserve, if we borrow, if, as long as we fully utilize the one sixty-three nine seventeen, we would stay at the same tax rate and it would be at the one point seven and not a one point six four or anything like that. I'd rather keep it at one point seven that adjusts our assessment, um, tax base rate, it adjusts right within the tax base. If we did take that one sixty-three nine seventeen, put it either into reserve, reduce borrowing, however council wishes to do that, we would still then stay at the one point two eight four nine tax rate. If we were to say not spend it, it would drop the tax rate to one point two seven seven seven. So if we want to keep it the same, we can reallocate that money either to reserves or borrowing or, or not. It's, it's council's decision, so.
So council, you have that information now that, uh, Counselor Miller, I don't know if you are making a motion. I know that, uh, Counselor Olson has said that he would rescind his, his, uh, previous motion to move from one point five to one point five. Uh, I just need to move forward. Kirk, uh, Counselor Miller.
Uh, thank you, your worship. So if I take Counselor Olson's motion and if we put it back against the tax rate, you would actually, every resident would say, but again, that goes to the multiplier again, the mo, the, the, the tax rate would actually go down yet again. It'd be still lower than it was last year, but instead of by one cent, it's going to be lower by roughly three cents or four cents because it, as our tax rate drops. So, uh, I would be willing to support Counselor Os, Olson's motion of going one point seven and applying the variance to the tax rate, uh, to drop the tax rate, which then lowers it for non-residents for residents. Are you okay with that, Counselor Olson?
Yes.
Yeah, it's okay.
Oh, I'm just going to put it in here and I can.
Counselor Luck. Thank you, your worship. Um, through you to our treasurer. Um, so originally during our business, our budget planning, we, uh, approved one point five five because we were all very cognizant of, you know, the struggles that small businesses have and we want to support them. Since then, at our last meeting, of course, they decreased the tax rate unbeknownst to us when we were making our decisions. Do you have a calculation on what that absolute value would look like in terms of, be, you know, again, at the end of the day, are they basically paying the same? Because the government has dropped the tax rate, like, you know, at the end of the day, if I was a small business owner back in October at one point five five versus today, since the government drops, dropped the tax rate, if we went to one point seven, would it actually work out in the wash where we're, they're actually paying pretty much the same? If that makes sense.
Ms. Brandon.
Uh, your worship, through Counselor Luck, it's, it's hard to get a definitive solid number. Um, our non-residential assessment increased by eight point eight percent. I did try to get from the province, what out of that eight point eight, what relates to existing and what would relate to new? Um, and I, I wasn't able to get that, um, information. But in looking at our municipal property that we get assessed on, our municipal property assessments only went up four point seven. In Rossay, they went up about four point five. So when I look at that and look at some of those numbers, yes, there's some municipal, but again, they're non-residential properties. It kind of leads me to believe that, you know, for existing, we might be at like five or six percent. And if that's the case, they will definitely see a decrease. Anything over kind of five percent, they would see an increase. Anything lower, like if their assessment went lower than five percent, they're going to see a decrease. Uh, for example, like I looked up a couple of different businesses, a couple of daycares, they only went up three percent. So they're definitely going to see a decrease. Do I have an exact number? I do not.
Thank you, Ms. Brandon. What is the pleasure of counsel, please? Do we have to rescind the motion? Your worship, yes, through, to be consistent with our budget process, decisions are made right until the budget is actually approved. Uh, in other words, you can change your mind or similar to what you did with the civic relations budget? Yes. No. It's to change. I think the wording might be better to change.
Okay, the proposed, proposed motion, your worship, moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Miller, to revise the previous motion of October twenty-fifth, special budget meeting of the one point, or the one five-five ratio for non-residential and change the non-residential property tax ratio to one, um, seven in keeping in line with the neighboring municipalities of Saint John and Rossay, which will represent approximately an additional one hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars in added tax revenue, which can go towards further reducing the twenty twenty-three tax rate.
Thank you, Ms. Snow. Back to Ms. Brandon, please.
Uh, yeah, through you, your worship. So by doing that with my calculation, it would take the tax rate to one point two seven 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 seven. Um, seven. So I just wanted that from one point two eight four nine, which was what we had, to one point two seven seven seven. And being that since we are kind of doing this on the fly, I, I tried to prep as much as possible. Um, if I could have some, some time to just take it away in the morning, just to confirm it, I can give you my estimated numbers, but I, I understand the intent. So I guess that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Brandon. Is there a motion moving forward? Okay. Did we have a second? Counselor Miller, on the question, please. Would you like to read the motion one more time?
Moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Miller, revised the previous motion of October twenty-fifth at the special budget meeting of the one point five-five ratio for non-residential and change the non-residential property tax rate to one point seven in keeping in line with the neighboring municipalities of Saint John and Rossay and which will represent approximately an additional one hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars in added tax revenue, which can go towards further reducing the twenty twenty-three tax rate to one point two seven seven seven.
Thank you, Ms. Snow. On the question. Uh, Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, your worship. Just to confirm, the, uh, the, uh, motion as read by the town clerk is not actually populated on my iPad, but I'm assuming that just didn't feed through. Uh, you know, oh, there it is. Okay, so it's coming through now. I just wanted to be able to read the up-to-date, uh, uh, motion. And can I, can I just ask, I, I know that we, uh, have been going around this, but uh, it seems to me that by moving to the one points, I'm thinking of the deputy mayor's concern about our, uh, non-residential small businesses. And, uh, it seems as though we're making a grand effort here to try to create the best conditions for everyone as, as, uh, hopefully people would expect we would try to do. And I, I'm just curious, perhaps from either the, the deputy mayor or, uh, perhaps Counselor Miller, uh, earlier about, um, the degree to which this addresses the issue as raised by the deputy mayor. Cause I certainly would, you know, uh, join in with, uh, a chorus there saying, we certainly want to try to, uh, not, uh, sort of adversely affect the tax rate for our non-residential, uh, small businesses. But as I understand it, this seems to be addressing that to the best degree we can under the circumstances, especially given the way the province is making these late Friday afternoon type sort of changes, uh, as it were, uh, with their model and, for example, reducing their, um, going whole hog on the reduction of their rate to, uh, non-residential entities in the province, uh, uh, rather than doing it in gradations. So anyway, hopefully that makes sense, what I'm asking.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. I will go to Deputy Mayor Stryer.
Uh, thank you, your worship. My, my concern is, is we're sort of in a catch twenty-two situation here where the province is the, the good, the good ones who say, okay, we're going to reduce the commercial tax rate. Uh, thank you very much. Now the, uh, municipalities, you turn around and raise it. Uh, sort of in a bad situation. Um, I don't believe just because other municipalities have done it that we should follow suit. I do believe that it takes, um, it's been a lot of calculations for our treasurer to figure this out. Again, um, we're looking at, um, increase in, in costs. I understand that, um, uh, the municipality level, but we do have a budget, a balanced, um, budget that's coming forward that I believe addresses our growth that we need to address and, um, allowing things to happen in our community, um, with our roads and our recreational facilities, all that's been addressed. So I think, I believe that when you look at, um, balancing it out, if, um, commercial needs a little, um, I wouldn't say a helping hand, but when you're looking at, um, apartment buildings that are going to increase perhaps their rent because, um, their assessments have gone up eight percent, uh, that is a direct hit on our residents. And so, um, those are my comments and, and I just, just really do think it's just taking from one and giving to the other. The province has reduced it. Now they've said, okay, municipalities, you raise it up. So, you know, it's a shell game in my mind. And, um, I think in being prudent that we should at least wait one year, wait to see what happens with the Regional, um, Service Commission and how that's going to move forward. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Stryer. And it was also asked by Counselor Bigger if, uh, Counselor Miller, if you had any comment to Counselor Bigger's statements. Counselor Miller.
Yes, through you, your worship, Counselor Bigger. Um, eh, yeah, I, I guess to, to summarize it, um, there's, they're not paying anymore s- so that, so if I look at it, I just did the quick calculation. So from twenty twenty-one, the tax rate for non-residential, when you also include the, uh, point one nine, uh, the one point nine four cent assessment that, that everybody gets, they were paying four dollars and twenty-one ninety-six in twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-two was four oh six nine nine. This would bring it down to approximately four dot oh four. Um, so over the last two years, uh, unlike some of the other municipalities, we've actually been dropping our tax rate faster. And whenever we drop our tax rate, the multiplier also drops for, for the non-residential. So by doing this over the last two years, the non-residential tax rate has actually gone down by seventeen point two cents, where the residential tax rate would have gone down by six point five cents. Um, so a, and to put it in comparison, Rossay went from the one point five to the one point seven. Uh, they dropped their tax rate one cent. So we've dropped, we're, we're proposing dropping our tax rate approximately, and I'm looking at the treasurer because I know she's got to balance the numbers here, yeah, but approximately three point eight six cents, so almost four cents were going down. Um, and so where's, where some of the other ones are going down less. And, and, and the treasurer brought up a very good point when you look at residential. So we all know that for residents, uh, most of us, me included, had a seventeen point eight percent increase, but everybody was capped at ten. But our total, uh, assessment for our, for our, um, um, budgeting purposes went up over twelve percent, so it was over two percent of new growth. Um, I know we went and approved some commercial last year, um, or this year, some got, some got put on the books and, and some was finished. So you've got some buildings that weren't finished, that weren't taxed fully last year, that would be taxed this year under the non-commercial. So in, in, it, it's kind of, nobody likes to pay more. People won't be paying more as a, as a, as a cent. Uh, yes, if our, if our tact, if our budget goes up and, and our assessments go up, we all pay more. But when we look at the, uh, what's been happening, I think our average costs have gone up seven or eight percent, so. Um, but again, it, it, it's kind of sharing, but we all know the reason for the province dropping the rates was instead of doing the unconditional grants that they've been giving and grants from everywhere, part of the whole reform that people were talking about is let us keep more of the money versus the deciding what the province gives us back, so. Uh, but in the end, the non-residential will pay less than they did last year. The residents will pay less. I'm talking tax rate, not our, not our tax bill. We're all going to pay more. Um, and by continually addressing our tax rate, I mean, a few years ago, we were almost at a dollar thirty-five. Now we're back down to a proposal close to a buck twenty-seven, buck twenty-eight, so. Uh, a combination of both, Mr. Bigger. I don't know if that, uh, helped with the answer. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carried six one with couns, uh, with Deputy Mayor Stryer being the nay. Thank you. Next item is the twenty twenty-three general capital budget approval. Staff report from Town Treasurer.
Your worship will need to do the motion for the operating budget.
Counselor Miller, please.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Um, I'll read the, the general fund highlights first, if that's okay. And then we'll go from there. And I'm going to do some, I'm going to do some estimates. So, um, let us know that this, real quick math of the two, one twenty-seven seven and the three point eight six will be confirmed by our treasurer for the final notes that go into our province. So those, I'll, I'll estimate when I just read it here, if that's okay. So the general fund budget highlights for Quispam sis for twenty twenty-three, the tax rate will decrease by approximately three point eight six cents to approximately a dollar twenty-seven seven, uh, per assessment. Uh, the tax rate for Quispam sis is now at two point two six five billion, which represents, oh, sorry, I thought you were giving me, uh, which represents a twelve point two one percent increase, uh, two hundred and forty-six million from the twenty twenty-two tax base. This includes an increase to the non-residential ratio from a one point five to a one point seven. As part of the local governor's reform, the province has provided municipality with the option to adjust the non-residish, residential ratio to between one point four and one point seven, starting in twenty twenty-three. Uh, the community funding equalization grant was decreased to ninety-two thousand two hundred and three, a decrease of twenty-three thousand fifty-one dollars, twenty percent from our original amount received last year. This is only related to the core funding portion of the grant. We do not receive currently any equalization funding. This grant is being eliminated over the next five years and the ability to increase our ratio on non-residential property was meant to offset this grant. The total budget of thirty million eight hundred and forty-five thousand eight sixty-six reflects an increased total expenditures of two point six four million. The net budget or total property revenue will increase by two point five three one million or nine point five three percent over twenty twenty-two. It's comprised of the following: increased expenses from internal sources, one point one four million, added increased expenses from external sources, one point one eight two million, less decrease of ever, other revenue of minus a hundred and thirty-one thousand eight fifty-two, add your decrease in provincial grant revenue, which is twenty-three thousand fifty-one, added increase in property tax revenue of three hundred and seventeen thousand three eighty-six, requires an increase of rep, property tax revenue of two point five three one million. Residential garbage, compost pickup and curbside recycling is included in the budget at a total cost of one point two five three three oh four, which is a five hundred nine thousand dollar, and five hundred nine thousand three oh four is related to their tipping costs, an increase of eighty thousand three hundred and four dollars. The average cost per household now for this service is two hundred and one dollars and forty-three cents. And the average cost per household before was included in our town budget in twenty sixteen was three hundred and nine dollars and ninety-six cents. So even after all these years, we're still saving about a hundred and eight dollars per household per year and much more efficient for the environment as well. Uh, our debt servicing cost is now at six point nine four percent, which is our total debt cost as a percentage of total budget. This is anticipated borrowing of five hundred thousand dollars this year for our twenty twenty-three capital program. Most user fees such as ice rentals, fields, facilities will increase by three percent. Included in the operating budget are one, our contributions totaling one hundred and eighty thousand seven forty-three to the general capital reserve and a one-time withdrawal of twenty thousand dollars for the general operating reserves. This will withdraw us a carry forward from the twenty twenty-two town website project that will occur in twenty twenty-three. Capital expenditures are budgeted at four point seven five three million and are funded from the general operating fund budget at two point nine two six four five zero and the Canadian Community Fund, Fund Building Grant at six hundred and sixty-one thousand six thirty-three, borrowing of five hundred thousand dollars and reserve funding of six hundred and sixty-four thousand nine seventeen. Full details of the capital plan are included in our budget package along with our, with the years twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven. The Kennebec cases, regional police and KAV fire departments are shared between Quispam sis and Rossay at approximately a sixty forty split. The town contribution to these protective services is eight point eight one eight million, an increase of eight hundred and thirteen thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars over two thousand one. And it includes another hundred and fourteen thousand eight ninety-six related to the borrowing for renovations for fire station number two. The increase is related to an. The increase is related to an annualization of four new officers hired in twenty twenty two for the police and for fire, there's additional capital and venture costs. In twenty, as twenty twenty two only had borrowing for station two renovations. The Kennebec Haces Public Library budget is shared between Quis Pam sis and Rossay based on our population. With the annual adjustment for an estimate estimated population increase, Quis Pam sis share for twenty twenty three is sixty one point zero four percent. For a total cost of one hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred ninety eight dollars, which includes the capital adjustment paid to Rossay due to the population percentage change over time. Our public transit or COMEX is now budgeted at ninety six thousand two thirty eight, which is an increase of nine hundred and eighty four dollars from twenty twenty two. As part of the local governance reform that we talked about earlier, the mandates from the regional service commissions have changed drastically starting in twenty twenty three. The mandate now includes regional tourism, economic development, envision, community development, regional transportation, regional public safety, regional sport, recreation and culture. Uh the regional field facilities operating capital costs on top of solid wage waste, which is always their mandate. The regional facility member fees for these in this year estimated at one point four eight seven million, which is a three hundred and six thousand dollar increase over twenty twenty two. There are a few different places where where we see this in the budget, we've got Regional Service Commission, which is ninety five thousand five nine five forty nine. Regional facilities operating five hundred ninety eight thousand four ninety eight. Solid waste tipping fees, five hundred nine thousand three oh four. Envision St. John and Growth Agency, two eighty four, two hundred eighty four thousand, sorry. Uh total regional services costs is now one point four eight seven three five one. In twenty twenty, council voted to to support a creation of a regional economic development agreement with Greater Saint. Starting in twenty twenty one. Envision St. John, the regional growth agency started operations in twenty twenty one, and our share of this budget in twenty twenty three is two hundred and eighty four thousand dollars. The regional facilities. Which are now legislated or committed to uh fa- to the following facilities in St. John is seventeen point four nine five percent. TD Station is one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The Trading Convention Center was eighty seven thousand nine thirty seven, Imperial Theater is ninety two thousand seven twenty five, Aquatic Center, two hundred thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars. St. John Arts Center is fifty five thousand nine forty two, which is a total share of five hundred ninety eight thousand four ninety eight. Which is actually an increase of of one hundred nineteen thousand dollars from last year, last year we were four seventy, so this was before the capital got added. Our combination of the shared regional services costs and Envision St. John, the regional growth agency budgets totals now eight hundred and eighty two thousand four ninety eight. So since amalgamation of Quis Pam sis in nineteen ninety eight, this now puts us over twelve point one million we pay to these facilities uh that are eh organizations in St. John. Also, what we've done for this year is grants and sponsorships for the community organizations total thirty nine thousand two hundred and ten dollars. With the following, seven hundred and one, seven thousand one hundred thirty five dollars goes to Pro Kids. Uh one thousand dollars to the St. John U eighteen Vitos, seven hundred fifty dollars goes to International Women's Day. One thousand dollars goes to the KV Food Bank, three hundred dollars for Hammond River Angling Association, three hundred dollars for Junior Achievement. One, ten thousand dollars for Kingsway Life Care Alliance Foundation, seventy five hundred dollars to KV Oasis Youth Center. Two thousand dollars to the Compassionate Grief Center, eighteen seventy five for Crime Stoppers in-kind donation. Uh two thousand five hundred dollars for Shining Horizons, three thousand dollars to Oldies Ninety Six Radio and eighteen hundred and fifty dollars to other donations and support. And. Sorry, my computer went to the wrong file. I gotta go back in. Okay, yeah.
For those of you needing to refresh, just pull down on your screen, please, refresh the budget.
Oops, I got it now. Uh revise on the previous motion, October twenty fifth. Oh, so that's just a little detail, sorry. Hang on a second, okay, here we go. Oh, I got it right here, I'm good, I can, okay, reboot it. So uh general operating budget, I resolve, sorry, be it resolved that the sum of thirty million eight hundred and forty seven thousand eight sixty six. Be the total operating budget for the municipality and that the sum of. Twenty nine million two hundred sixty six thousand seven hundred twenty six dollars be the warrant of the municipality for the ensuing year. And the original tax rate for the municipality be approximately one point two seven seven. And the non-residential tax rate be approximately two point one seven two one.
Thank you, it's been moved by Councilor Miller, seconded by. Councilor Olson on the question. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
On the question, your worship, I'd just like to make a statement, I will vote in favor of the uh the budget. Because I believe that we've um done a lot to achieve this budget and moving forward. However, I will state that I'm still not happy with the non-residential amount. But in the overall reaching um. High level of the budget, I I believe that we've done the best we can, thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Schreier. On the question, please vote now. Oh, sorry, hold your votes, Councilor Bigger.
Thank you. Uh yeah, I'm just trying to pick my moment here correctly. I uh we, you had referenced, your worship, the uh. Um situation with the regional uh. The regional facilities uh situation and essentially that our bid, our request to. Have the Trade and Convention Center removed from the regional facilities list was denied. Uh and I take note that in the letter issued to us that that was made available to us from. The Minister of Local Government, Local Governance Reform this afternoon. Um at about four thirty PM, that email arrived. That uh there's no rationale, uh in fact, there's. No discussion at all about uh our or or any consideration of understanding as to what. You know, our position on this was, rather, there's just sort of a statement that. Uh the implement, I and I quote, the implementation of the local governance reform will not bring any change to the five regional facilities that will be included. And fully cost shared, capital and operating. Uh I I kind of take umbrage to the tone of that frankly, and I just feel it's important to for that to be stated publicly. I also notice um that um and so to your uh statements, your worship. As our representative uh on the facilities commission, there's there's no. There's there's no logic being, like, we have no idea why, you say that that has been denied to us. But there's been no rationale provided that that I can locate anywhere. As a counselor in my email or in the discussions that we've had, am I? Perhaps I'm missing something, but. The other thing I want to just make mention of, and this is perhaps more of a just a burr under my saddle about the whole process, I I really. Uh would chime in, uh fall in line behind Councilor Olson about the. Question marks and uncertainties about what we're lending our support to, generally speaking. And uh I feel that we're basically being pushed into a corner and forced to sort of capitulate to the province's strong-arming on this matter. Um it's sort of like, well, we'll give you the numbers later, but this is what you're going to do. Um but I uh I take note, just bear with me here. Uh again, quoting from Daniel Allen's letter this afternoon, we believe respecting the spirit and intent of the original agreement is the path forward. And uh I don't think that the uh, I don't think there's enough understanding of what the spirit of intent of the original agreement was. For that to be used as any kind of rationale for anything, I mean, I'm all for, in the in the most general sense. Uh and perhaps I'm being, I'm not being practical enough here, I'm getting too caught up in the language of it and semantics, but. It just seems to me that the original intent was, as I understand it anyway, was partly to stave off the danger of a full amalgamation by arriving. At a an agreement that would allow for sort of autonomy among the various municipalities, but still. Provide some sort of cooperative mechanism that would satisfy the province at the time of the day. So as to hopefully, you know, uh as I say, stave off perhaps a full regional amalgamation. And if that's the attitude, if that's the uh, if that was sort of the raison d'etre of the original uh. The original agreement, I I guess I couldn't say.
Bigger.
The uh, the spirit of the agreement was noted under the envision paragraph.
And I I don't believe that it was the intent to embrace the entire.
Piece of literature there uh as far as the Regional Services Commission is concerned. I think what the minister was referring to was to have envision oversee. Uh all of the items that that are in that paragraph, I I believe, if that's the proper interpretation.
Okay, well, I'll just leave that one where it is then, but I'm, I continue to be very concerned about the fact that we're being. Sort of pushed into a corner, it seems to me, and as Councilor Olson has pointed out. These numbers are likely to only increase, and uh I believe even as your worship herself has pointed out. We're uh previously, you know, we're essentially being asked to contribute towards costs on buildings for which we have no ownership or decision about. Uh what happens to them down the line, so I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Councilor Bigger, and on the question, uh you know, certainly. There was no rationale given for denying removing the Trade and Convention Center. Uh as far as the email that came to us today. And uh to your question of uh paying for capital costs. Uh my my question would be, if one of those buildings were to sell. Then I would like for us to have at least our capital investment returned to us. Or to have the proportional amount per community that that uh. Uh funds these facilities return to us if one of them sells, and there was no response uh on that either. Councilor Miller, please on the.
It's about, it's about the equity, excuse me for interrupting, it's about the equity that's being invested on our part. On behalf of our town residents, and where do we ever realize that back in the event that one of those facilities is sold off? There doesn't seem to be any mechanism whatsoever for that to be done. And it's one thing to say operational costs are year to year, our residents make use of these facilities, we're all in agreement with that. But to the degree that we're pouring money, uh and as has been said over the last many years, millions of dollars and will in the future. Into, and we don't even know how much, into capital costs for these facilities. That's like pouring equity into a home, and then when you sell it, you get none of that back. So that just doesn't make any sense, and it's not about being uncooperative with the city of St. John, I think that we've proven ourselves to be great partners in that regard. And I don't want us to uh, I don't want this issue to divide us as municipalities, I feel that the argument is more. With the province in the larger sense by being given no sort of real serious uh. Uh consideration to the, at least our request to have the TCC removed from the list. Uh and that just seems to have been thrown off to the side, no, we're not going to do that. Uh and you're going to pay the full shot, and thank you very much, and move on, and you don't know how much it'll be, but we'll let you know. I just think it's completely, I think it's quite juvenile, in fact, and and petulant. And uh fairly precocious of the province, so that's my final comment.
Thank you, Councilor Bigger, Councilor Miller, please.
Thank you, worship, and I would just like to concur or agree um with Councilor Bigger and Councilor Olson. It is kind of a strange time. Uh I I guess, you know, the our mayor, the I believe chairman of the that board or maybe the new board, I don't know how this is working now because one's dissolved and the other one's there, so. I I don't think this fight is over, and it's not really a fight, and and I agree with you, Councilor Bigger, it's not a, there's cooperation is not an an issue. It's just be fairer, um you know, I I look at some of the asks, so. Okay, St. John has asked for all this extra capital, it's tripled from what's happened the last five years, okay, why? Uh just kind of a question, and is all that being accepted, so can some of that be potentially, and again, I don't know, I have all the details, but. Is the board gonna say, or the RSC, you should have paid for this, the other, the other people don't pay for it. And that's what we don't know, I mean, there's a lot of things that, when we started this process back in the nineties, I wasn't here, I was in Alberta, but. You know, we didn't have a Qplex, there was only one ring, there was only one like major center, there's only one convention center, there's only this, well, we got a Qplex, we got a pool, we got a convention center, we got a fruit walking track. St. John Vitos are here, we got free pickleball, we got, you know, we got just as much as more than some of those, so. It's just, i- i- I I'm with you, it's like, it does, it's been an interesting world. Uh we get a letter that finally, after it said you got to do your budgets by this date, and we don't even have the actual numbers, we just said, yeah, you're you're gonna do it, but. There's no details on is is the full amount of the budget going to be in there, so I think that's where we still have to have discussions later is what. I know what was in the budget and what they proposed, but is everything being passed through, and and again, I mentioned earlier, but I'm a little. Curious because we were only supposed to do it on the four facilities, but the letter from Minister Allen talks about five. And talks about adding capital to the fifth, which is the Imperial Center, so. I'm with you, so I I'm I'm in favor of our budget, but I'm still in protest of the of the way this is done, but I think. I don't think the fight's over, if they expect it to be over, I don't think it is, so that's it, thanks.
Councilor Bigger, is your hand up from previously or again?
No, it's it's up again, I'm sorry to have to tell you. I've raised it afresh sadly. Uh your worship, I just want to also add that um to the the it to the letter from uh. Uh the minister, uh and Councilor Olson referenced this earlier, uh I'm sorry, this slipped my mind in my last sermon. Uh that envision has identified apparently some, or St. John has identified some priorities that, you know, envision says they might consider. Related to the funding that will be provided through all of this. Um there's no, we have no idea what any of those are, and I I would like to uh, I'd like to request that we. Uh you know, implore uh envision or perhaps the city of St. John to uh. Hey, let us in on the secret, what are the, what do you guys want to spend all that money on that we're all contributing to, by the way? So whether that involves having the 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 good folks at Envision come back and and brief us on how things stand for them, perhaps right after the uh. Uh Christmas holidays or something like that, so we can begin the new year with at least an insight as to. Uh how this money is, you know, where, who's who's sort of steering this towards what? Um because we have a sense about that based on the last update we were provided before. All of this sort of started to, you know, uh develop into what it's become. And so I think that to clarify and and perhaps, you know, blow some of the confusion out of it, I would certainly appreciate. Uh a fresh update from Envision uh about uh. I mean, uh you know, you could read that cynically and conclude that uh. You know, St. John is going to decide how that money is is spent now that Envision doesn't operate with autonomy uh in that regard. Of course, they're a collaborative organization and and they do a great job of that, but I just think it would be incumbent upon us as a town to. As a council to perhaps get a fresh update from them as soon as possible about, you know, what that all means, since the minister has chosen to. Be fairly vague and opaque about what all that means, except to allude to it. As though it somehow is some sort of positive uh component, so that's my request. And I would, I I mean, I could make a motion out of that if you'd like, but I would perhaps, I think we have a question on the.
Yes, we have a motion on the table, thank you, on the question. It's been moved by Councilor Miller, seconded by Councilor Olson, please vote now. Motion carried seven zero. Onto the next item, Councilor Miller.
Thank you, your worship, be resolved that the council of the town of Quis Pam sis accept the twenty twenty three general capital fund budget as presented with a total of. Four million seven hundred fifty three thousand dollars in capital expenditures.
Thank you, Councilor Miller, it's been moved by Councilor Miller, seconded by Councilor Olson on the question. Please vote now, oh, sorry, hold your vote, Councilor Donovan.
Thank you, I just um, as the deputy mayor um did in the previous um. Section, I just did want to um pass on my. Um you know, not really disappointment, but just sort of uneasiness about spending a hundred and twenty thousand on a bathroom or washing facility. Um and I just wanted that to be known, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Donovan, on the question, please vote now. Motion carried seven zero. And. The next item is eight, sorry, eight B enhancing the uh. Seating arrangement at the council table. Councilor Olson, please.
Thank you, worship, uh I wanted to talk for a second before we left that uh. Uh budget uh category that we were voting on, and I'd respectfully suggest.
Uh Councilor Olson, the the motion's been made, are we allowed to have further speakers on that? Uh Counselor Olson, the, the motion's been made, are we allowed to have further speakers on that, Madam Clerk?
It's got nothing to do with the motion itself, it's to do with the content. I realize that, counselors, I'm trying to talk about the request that Counselor Bigger talked about getting clarification on the
A, a letter of clarification, thank you, Counselor Olson, go ahead.
I would, I'd just like to suggest if Counselor Bigger wanted to make that motion uh requesting clarification on the, on the use and amount of uh of tourism uh fees that were gonna be collected and then utilized by the city of Saint John unbeknownst to the rest of the partners. Uh I think that a, a letter could be crafted to clarify that, or should be crafted to clarify that.
Thank you, Counselor Olson, appreciate that.
Uh so moved, I guess, your worship, if that's appropriate?
So it's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Olson on the question.
Moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Olson, uh correspondence, um I guess be issued to the minister in response to his email today uh asking for clarification on the use and amount of tourism fees being collected and to be used by the city of Saint John.
Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Just while we're on that vein, I, I thought perhaps is that um in the same letter that they refer to five facilities versus four, so maybe we should ask for clarification on the number of facilities that they're actually talking about at the same time, if that's appropriate.
Good point, thank you, uh Deputy Mayor Schreier, and that's been approved by the seconder. Uh Counselor Bigger, are you okay with that?
I am, I just want to clarify, your worship, that uh as for what the town clerk just read there, so this is a response back to Minister Allen, his office, is that what we're saying, as opposed to, for example, speaking to uh, and perhaps it has to be if we broaden it as the deputy mayor suggesting to that other issue about regional facilities, but um you know, as opposed to going to Invision directly, or I guess we can't really ask the city of Saint John, maybe, it's just that the minister is the one who sent this, this letter alluding to these things, so I guess it seems logical to go, on the one sense, it seems logical uh to go back to the minister's office. On a practical level, I have very little hope on what kind of clarification we're likely to get at this point. But that being said, I guess that's the proper course of action, so yeah, that's fine.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger, Counselor Olson, please.
No, that's fine, uh your worship, I just was supporting that.
Thank you. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried seven zero, thank you, the next item is enhancing communication in the council chambers, correspondence from Counselor Locke dated June of uh nine twenty-one. Uh counselor supported having a further discussion on the seating arrangement around the council ta- table uh once the plexiglass and masks were removed, and here we are today, uh Counselor Thompson.
Um yes, your worship, I would move that council refer the council chamber seating arrangement to the town hall building assessment slated for the twenty twenty-three budget year to review the uh review potential options to enhance communication and best seating practices.
Thank you, it's been moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. Seeing there none, please vote now. Oh, sorry, uh Counselor Bigger.
I chose the wrong night not to be there, I'm sorry. Uh I just wanted to make a comment that prob- I'm sure can be worked into this down the line, I support the motion fully, but one of the things that uh I think would be of great benefit would be if you look in the ceiling out over the lectern where the public comes to uh speak out in the gallery, the speakers in the ceiling, of course, are where all of the microphonic, you know, sort of transmissions come back out. They're out in front of us and up and straight down, and that's why we have a hard time sometimes hearing, I think, around the horseshoe. There are no speakers above us or behind us, and I would suggest that some kind of added mechanism be employed, like a couple of small trapezoidal uh wedge monitors uh in the two opposing corners behind the council or something like that, that could also carry a low-level audio that wouldn't create microphone feedback, but something like that would be, I think would be really helpful, just in terms of the practical component of hearing one another. I was waiting for the plexiglass shields to come down before making any comment about that because I was eager to see if that would make a difference, and I mean, it's okay, my hearing's pretty good, but generally speaking, I think it's a little bit muffled, and it's one piece of I know a lot of money was spent on that very good technology that we have there, but I think that's one way that it could be greatly improved with not a lot of money, frankly, so just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried seven zero, thank you. Onto item number nine, correspondence, rezoning application to forty-seven Hampton Road, proposed medical clinic, Dr. Monica Graves and Dr. Natalie Graves. So if you'd like to come to the podium?
Uh it is for sale, and so we're interested in remaining in the town of Quispampasus long-term to continue to serve the community. We care for over two thousand patients between both of our practices, many of whom are residents of your municipality. In the spirit of wanting to, you know, ensure that we have a stable, long-term medical home for ourselves and our patients, um we're interested in purchasing a, a, a building that's existing on the Hampton Road. Um maybe you've seen the sign, it's two forty-seven Hampton Road. Um and we're coming to you tonight to request um that you consider rezoning the property for commercial use. So presently, uh there is a hairdressing salon that's been operating out of the building, I think, for, for years. Um but that it is currently zoned, and Jennifer can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's currently zoned as a residential property. Um and so my sister and I um would like, we've got an accepted offer on the building, uh we're meeting with contractors and um are hoping to move forward ha- with having the property rezoned for commercial uses so that we can run a medical practice uh out of there for years to come.
Thank you very much, Dr. Graves, and we have a motion uh on the table here. Uh Counselor Locke, please.
Thank you, your worship. Um I move that a public presentation date be set and advertised for December the sixth, two thousand and twenty-two in response to the application to rezone two forty-seven Hampton Road from single and two-family residential to commercial for the purpose of permitting the operation of a proposed medical clinic.
It's been moved by Counselor Locke, seconded by Counselor Thompson on the question. And Counselor Bigger, I don't see you anymore, so if you have a question, please speak up. Seeing there are no questions, please, please vote now. Counselor Bigger, did we lose you?
Oh, I can still hear you.
Uh did your vote come through? Okay, we're good, Counselor Bigger, thank you. Motion carried seven zero, thank you very much, doctor, and we'll see you in the future, bye-bye. Item nine B, proposed zoning bylaw amendment zero three eight dash forty-one, introduction of development permits. Uh Dwight Colburn, municipal planning officer, and Jennifer Jarvis, planning technologist.
Good evening, your worship, deputy mayor, councilors, the planning department would like to bring forward a proposed zoning bylaw amendment that would see focus, key focus is introduction of development permits. The development permits will uh fill a gap or a um a challenge that will be um the result of the introduction of the Building Code Administration Act by the province, which will uh cover the issuing of building permits for those structures that only fall under the National Building Code, which means that it will present a challenge in terms of being able to uh issue permits for other structures uh that fall outside the scope of the National Building Code, which would uh leave a gap that we need to address. So the proposed zoning bylaw amendment will introduce development permits into the municipality. The development permits are not new in terms of uh permitting process. They're uh being used throughout the province and other jurisdictions, um for example, in um in this particular reason, we have Hampton, Rossay, Saint John, and then when we look at places like Riverview, Moncton, uh D F Day should development permits for those items that fall outside the scope of uh building permits under the National Building Code. The amendment will also uh cover off some additional housekeeping items that we just need to, to address uh under the current provisions of the, the bylaw. Uh some of those deal with obviously um surface drainage, we get into um driveway elevations and whole alarmist agreements where elevations are greater than ten percent, then we need to look at um having whole alarmist agreements in place to address concerns with response to those residents uh by emergency services. We also need to bring forward a direct, follow directive of the province with respect to cannabis uh operations, both retail sales and, and the growing of cannabis, making sure that it's in light industrial zones. And just one other item I think to bring to note is in terms of the development uh permit process, the Community Planning Act provides the appropriate legislation uh to allow development officers to issue development permits to ensure that developments are in keeping with the municipal plan and zoning bylaws established by the municipality. We will extend the development permits to cover off subdivision developments as well. So uh prior to the undertaking of any initial site work as it relates to subdivision development, development permits will need to be issued um to the developers, this will allow us um regulation and control over uh clearing operations and growing operations to make sure appropriate measures are put in place as it relates to uh excessive uh tree cutting or uh controlling silt and runoff from these developments that impact adjacent properties as well as watercourses and wetlands uh within the municipality. Um at this time, the planning department is bringing it forward, and we're looking for uh a motion to establish a public hearing date and refer the proposed amendment to the Planning Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn. Uh Counselor Thompson, please.
Thank you, worship. I move that council to refer the proposed amendment to PAC for its written views and to set and advertise a public hearing date for December twentieth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson, it's been moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Donovan. On the question, Counselor Donovan, please.
Oh, sorry, I hit my button, my mistake.
Counselor Locke, please.
Thank you, your worship, through you to um Mr. Colburn, um I'm wondering if I can make a request that when um you know, I guess I'm not sure if I could build on this motion, but in terms of look, you know, sending this to PAC, for some reason, I thought in one of the documents we reviewed, it was three hundred meters, and then in this particular document in the draft, it was a hundred and fifty meters. But I guess in terms of being proactive, I would like PAC's um I, I guess, attention or kind of views on the hundred and fifty meters um of a cannabis production facility of uh of residence or residential area and schools, I just wanna make sure that I know that that's the bare minimum based on what the government suggests, but I think being proactive um looking ahead, I just would hate for us to get into a situation where someone now you know, that lives a hundred and fifty meters away from a potential cannabis um production facility now lives with the smell, so I just would like a little bit of kind of background work looking at that before um PAC comes back with the recommendations, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Locke. On the question, seeing there none, please vote now. Motion carried six zero, I'll just note that Deputy Mayor Schreier had to leave. Thank you, Mr. Colburn. Item nine C, a resignation letter from the Kennebuk cases Valley Fire Board, uh from our member Nora Sabrati. There is a motion there, please. Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, worship, I'd move that Ms. Sabrati be thanked for her five years of dedicated service to the Kennebuk cases Valley Fire Department's Board of Directors as one of Quispampasus's representatives, and the current vacancy now on the fire board, we refer to the nominated committee for review and recommendation. Uh and on a quick note, be in the chair of the fire board too, if, if, if possible, if we could have him for December. That would be great, I don't know, the reason I say that, we've had issues with quorum in the last two. So we'll discuss that later, cause yeah, we, we missed the last two meetings because of quorum, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Miller, it's been moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Donovan. On the question, Counselor Olson, please, no? On the question, seeing there, oh, Counselor Miller, or sorry, Counselor Bigger.
I can't fool you now, thank you, your worship, uh I just wanted to, as a, as the other uh council member on our fire board uh joint fire commission, I just wanted to say a personal thank you as well to uh Ms. Sabrati, she's been really uh helpful and instructive as a new council member joining the team to observe kind of her you know, very uh insightful kind of comments and, and approach to things, so really appreciate her commitment. Hope she gets some great traveling in.
Thank you very much, Counselor Bigger, Counselor Donovan.
Thank you, I just looking for a little bit of clarification, um where it says Mrs. uh, Ms. Sabrati be thanked, does that mean we'll send a letter to her, just on behalf of council, or, or a postcard or something?
Yes, they will, thank you. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried six zero, item number D. One twenty-six Millennium Drive, Kennebuk cases, regional police building and parking lot extension, Millennium Drive Development Scheme Bylaw number zero one seven. On the police commission, we do have Commissioner Bob McLaughlin with us this evening, Counselor Olson.
As your worship, I would move that council provide written comments regarding the proposed expansion to the Kennebuk case regional police force building and parking lot to the development officer within fourteen days following receipt of the site plan development package, so the feedback can, can be reviewed prior to the development officer rendering a final decision regarding the development of application.
Thank you, it's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Miller. On the question, once again, Counselor, oh. Come to the podium, please. This is Commissioner Bob McLaughlin of the Police Commission, also a resident in Quispampasus, go ahead, Bob.
We, it's not the building, we want the parking, we don't have enough parking there, and what we wanna try to do, it's within our budget now. If we lose that money in our budget, naturally the towns take it back, and I'm really frustrated because we've needed to use this for we gotta get this parking lot straightened out, eh, the building, uh Mr. Colburn, he helped us out tremendously, he was trying to put the whole package together with the uh building, and that's coming in for next year, which is great to have that, but really, it's the parking right now, we're trying to use that money in the budget, we try to save and script every, all along, and it's uh, I'm not trying to ask any favors. And it's, I'm not trying to ask for any favors. I just want to get that thing started now. And if it's going to take fourteen days of that, we just lost everything we got. And it's been a lot of time spending the budget to try to do that, to save the money. Mr. Colburn, I don't know if it's anyway that, on the building part, I just understand. I know it's council, that's, it says fourteen days. I was hoping to get that started right away. Because we had to wait for our budget too, because we had to send our budget into the town and also to the province. I guess you have to take it from the province, eh? So it was a process. And there was some misunderstanding all along. And then we've got the approval from the Department of Environment and we're ready to go for, do the parking. It's not the building, because I'll come back for the building afterwards. It's just the parking. If you have anyone's been there and go to the police station, there's not enough parking.
So the question, I guess through the Department of Engineering is, are we able to separate the two? Do we need two separate motions? Can we, can the commission start that immediately? It's a question.
Thank you, your worship. So the Development Scheme Bylaw outlines the practice or the guide in terms of following developments within that particular area of the Millennium Drive. So the Development Scheme Bylaw establishes that the development officer receives the application and then it's forwarded to building inspection, planning advisory committee and council and any other departments that would be deemed necessary to review. The Development Scheme Bylaw review process, in essence, focuses strictly on the site plan itself. The building portion of it is used to determine the adequacy of parking impacts on adjacent residential properties. In this particular case, the building expansion will not have any particular impacts on the residential property because you're essentially extending the building that is there and it meets all the setback requirements. So in terms of the site plan itself, it does provide adequate parking. It meets all the requirements of the Development Scheme Bylaw in terms of the review guidelines that are there. There was a concern regarding the removal of the existing trees, but that's being mitigated by the planting of a berm and cedar edges to reduce impacts basically from lights or glare from the vehicles. So that's been addressed. Planning Advisory Committee has initial review of it. There was no concerns expressed. They were in favor of the application. So the fourteen days is established in the bylaw. So what's been brought forward is, as it is a bylaw and the development officer is required to file the bylaw. What's been requested is given council fourteen days. If they wish to express their comments and provide those tonight, that would move the process along a little quicker. So in terms of the actual fourteen days, that's in accordance with the bylaw, providing ample time to meet the required review requirements.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Counselor Donovan.
Thank you. I just, I'm not against it or anything. I just have a question for you. Parking, is it parking for the cruisers or parking for the public? Because, and I mean no offense, but every time I've driven by the KV police, the parking lot, like the front parking lot at least, doesn't seem full. So I'm just kind of curious, like what the... Oh, staff parking, okay. Okay, thank you.
Parking, that's what the issue is right now.
Counselor Olson.
Thank you, your worship. Just with respect to our development officer's comments, it sounds like there's been a fair amount of investigation and study already completed on the proposal. And I was just wondering if, is there any, would there be any hesitation on his part to make a recommendation to accept the civic work, the civil work that has been proposed for this project? Now, if there's any, anything that should be reviewed by other people prior to a council actually authorizing it.
Mr. Colb.
The application has been sent to, has been sent to engineering, building inspection, so some of the interns, some of the other departments. I've received their feedback. There's been nothing of significant concern that would, that would prevent it from moving forward. The item that the Planning Department is waiting to receive is regarding, the site work is within Zone C of the Wellfield Protection. So we're just waiting for response from the Department of Environment in terms of it being approved under the Wellfield Protection Designations, whether that's through conditions or if it would be through an exemption. That is one item that's right now outstanding and that's the item from a planning and development officer perspective that I would like to have formally before rendering a decision. So that's the main item that we're waiting on right now.
Date, and I thought he's, the Department of Environment was going to send that off to you. I thought you had received it today. I will give you a copy of that and I'll make sure that they send it to you.
Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, your worship. So further to, with the comment just offered by our planning officer and given what Counselor Olson spoke to, would it be prudent and helpful to our police department for the council to perhaps try to expedite this and, you know, essentially lend our approval to what we have here pending the feedback from the Environment Department, as has been mentioned? I, I don't see that, I mean, I'm hearing the, sort of the strong concern, the urgency about getting this done ASAP. I appreciate the opportunity for written comments to come back from council, but I, I don't see a need to delay this frankly, after reading over what's in the staff report. So I just wonder if that, if there's any logic to that or if, I don't mean to push us along or race things along too fast, but I, perhaps there's other counselors who would have comments to be issued in written form back that would, you know, that I'm not thinking of. But I'm just wondering if that's the way we should maybe proceed.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. Counselor Olson, please.
Thank you, your worship. That's exactly what I was thinking, Counselor Bigger. That subject to receival, receiving information, adequate information from the Department of Environment and meets the criteria required by our development officer, that this motion could be put forward before council.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, your worship. I sit on the Police Commission, so of course I want to see this, you know, you know, completed. But I do have, I guess, two questions. One, in the actual report, it says that we're supposed to get feedback following the site plan development package. So I assume when I read this to prepare for tonight, something was going to come so we could see it. So is there an actual planned development package that we could at least look at to see what that parking lot looks like? And secondly, I just want to know in terms of, you know, expediting the process. You know, we're saying the berm with cedar trees would resolve the issue. I guess my worry is, do the residents on the other side of the police station that are losing the trees feel the same way in terms of they're okay with losing the trees and now potentially having police cars and staff parking kind of shining in their side window? I'm not sure how, you know, if the cedar trees are going to be full grown or are they going to just, you know, eventually they'll create a barrier? I'm just wondering. That would be my one concern is that we, you know, you do back onto a residential area and I'd want to make sure that we protect the investment of the residents as well that live in that area. And again, I was hoping we'd have some type of site plan development package so we could look at exactly what we're supposed to be voting and giving feedback on.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you. You know, in an effort to get it done as quickly as possible, maybe it would be a good idea to maybe allow the, or Mr. Colburn the opportunity to review it for a day, so maybe like a period of twenty-four hours. So that way council can see the design of the parking lot as well and maybe we can have an email poll potentially. That way it's, it wouldn't be the full fourteen days, but it would sort of fit the happy medium of allowing people to review things instead of pushing it through like instantly, maybe? Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to let Mr. Colburn respond, please.
Thank you, your worship. The, the package should have been included and attached to the memo. Obviously didn't make it into the package. I have it before me. If, if council would like to have it displayed and a brief overview to assist. And then we can move forward that way. But I do have it in front of me if, if it would be prudent for me to display it. But it was to be attached to the memo, so I do apologize for that, that error in it not being in the memo, in the staff, in the package.
What is council's pleasure?
I'm perfectly glad to entertain that now, but it's, you know, I'm sitting at home. So I, I would defer to whatever you folks feel is best.
Counselor Luck, please.
I concur with Counselor Bigger. I mean, again, you know, it does sound like time is of the essence. So I would like to support, you know, the police board. And I would like to get Mr. Colburn just to speak a little bit more to my other concern, just to put my concerns at rest in terms of the berm and, and just having it back onto a residential area. But I'm fine with kind of looking at that tonight and I would have brought it up. I assumed it was coming, so I just figured that we'd be getting this site development plan at a later date. So sorry, I would have mentioned it sooner.
Thank you, Counselor Luck.
Your worship, I might just jump in and say that, again, I, this won't be anything I have in my council package. So if there, I don't know if there's a possible way for that screen to be shared for me to see or not. But if possible, that would be great.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry there isn't Counselor Bigger. Counselor Miller is going to take a picture of it and email it to you. Mr. Colburn.
Thank you, your worship. And again, I apologize for this not being attached to my staff report. So the overall site plan shows the additional parking.
Couple of technical glitches here. Just getting set up.
My thanks to Counselor Miller, that technological wizard that he is. He sent me that picture.
All right, Mr. Colburn, please.
So what we have is, we have the site plan. So here's the existing building. Here's the additional building. And the site, the parking is getting added down, sort of, here's. Is this better? That sort of? So here's the additional building. Here's additional parking between, butting the commercial property. So additional parking, this is commercial property. Additional parking is going here, as well as they're adding in a second row of parking behind the existing parking. There's the residential property. So on the Millennium Drive Development Scheme, there's a minimum buffer of ten meters, which is indicated, which is indicated on the plan. So it's, it's indicated on the plan, right here is your ten meter buffer, okay? So that buffer, you're supposed to maintain existing vegetation. You can't, you can't excavate into it. So the bulk of the excavation is going to be in this particular area, okay? I think maybe the TV. Yeah, I think it's the TV's reflecting it. So the bulk of the, so when we, when we look at these new parking area, it's still retaining a significant amount of the vegetation. So it's, it's a losing of this particular vegetation area here. There's an introduction of a drainage well that goes, that captures the stormwater, brings it out to Cedar Ridge Boulevard. So in terms of the buffer, there's no changes to the buffer. So you're not removing any vegetation from the buffer. So the buffer is as it is today. It's just with the removal of these trees, it's how do you mitigate this? So what's happening is there's going to be a tree berm that's going to be constructed on the edge of the buffer that will enhance the, 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 that will mitigate the loss of vegetation and enhance the buffer to protect any, any impacts on the residential property. Essentially, the residential property is located here. So, you know, it's backing on sort of onto the corner. So there's, there's not a whole lot of changes in this particular area that would impact the residential property. So the request for the berm was to sort of enhance the vegetation that's currently within the buffer area to mitigate the offset of the, of the, of the loss of the vegetation for the parking lot, okay? So, other than that, that's the main concern. One item I did, I think I noted in my staff report, is that one of the requirements we need to look at is with respect to climate change. It's an opportunity for the police to look at possibly introducing car charging, EV charging, charging stations and look at it that way, which wasn't included in the package, but can come at a later date. However, since we're ripping up the site, paving, it's easier to put the conduit and all that stuff in place at the time. So it's just an item to consider. Other than that, as I mentioned, the only significant item I'm waiting for, and as Mr. McLaughlin's indicated, is approval from the Department of Environment. And I think, other than that, it would be prudent to move it forward. Thank you. And again, I do apologize.
Thank you. I think there are a few questions. I believe we've already read the motion. So on the question. Counselor Luck, please.
And thank, thank you, your worship, through you to Mr. Colburn. So right now, thank you for that. It makes it a lot clearer in my head in terms of what exactly is proposed. I guess in terms of what they're cutting into is their own land. They wouldn't have needed a variance to do that. So really they're, I mean, it's in their right as landowners, I guess. Like there wouldn't be anything that they're doing that, you know, again, you know, do the residents on the other side, would they even be aware or be, have to be notified because they're just doing something on their own property? If you can clarify that, thanks.
Mr. Colburn.
The detractors not work with inside the ten meter buffer area, so that's not being impacted. The mitigation measure of planting the cedar edge in the berm is to enhance it just to obviously address potential concerns, so.
Thank you.
What we're trying to do is just, we're trying to get the left-hand side, so the staff parking area, get that done and try to use some of the existing fill where we can expand for the future building and bring that fill around is what we're, we're trying to do, just to save some, some funds. And then that parking lot will be roughed in on that end where the building's going to go in the future, which I'll come back. And we'll still have the same, the same parking that's here now for the police officers because we're trying to keep that, it's always safer to keep it, police officers parking or the cars, police cars on one section and the staff parking on the other end. And so really we're trying to do as much as we can now in the staff parking plus get it all roughed in on behind where the police cars are going to get, just for the future. As far as car charges, I mentioned to, or to Mr. Colburn that we will do that on, we'll run the conduit when we do the building because we'll be tearing that all up. That was our plan and we're talking about that. We're, that's for our police cars, not for our staff. We, I mean, no offense, they can have their own at home, okay? But we're doing this for the police cars and that's why when we do the building, the conduit and that's all be run.
Perfect. Thank you. On the question. Are we okay?
Yeah, so the motion, your worship, was changed from the original.
Go ahead, Ms. Snow.
The revised motion reads, moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Miller. Council lend its approval to the Kennedys Regional Joint Board of Police Commissioners' application subject to the approval of the Department of Environment and local government on the issue of the Wellfield. subject to the approval of the Department of Environment and local government on the issue of the wellfield protection.
Thank you, Ms. Snow. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carries six zero, thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Thank you. Item nine E. Correspondence from Administrator John Jarabee, Kennedys Case Valley Fire Department, re, uh, extension of regional fire agreement, and Mr. Jarabee is the CAO of, uh, Rosay. And we have a motion here. Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, your worship, I move the Chris Pampas Town Council agrees to extend the regional fire protection agreement and the administration agreement for one year to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And as such, uh, MOU be prepared and executed by the participating parties to formalize a one-year extension.
Thank you, it's been moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Thompson. On the question. Counsel. Please vote now. Motion carries six zero. Item number ten, bylaws. Item ten A, proposed sewerage utility bylaw amendment number zero five dash twenty-three, a bylaw of the municipality of Chris Pampas respecting sewerage utility, consideration of third and final reading. You have it there in front of you? Ms. Snow, please.
Your worship, the two bylaws, uh, do not have to be read as they have been advertised, summarized and advertised. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snow. Counselor Miller.
I'd move whereas, uh, notice has been published on the town of Chris Pampas website pursuant to section fifteen-three and fifteen-four of the Local Governance Act and whereas a proposed sewage utility bylaw amendment number zero five dash two-three, a bylaw of the municipality of Chris Pampas respecting sewage utility, referenced in second reading, uh, in a red, read first and second reading at November first, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting. Now therefore be resolved, third and final reading be given to proposal sewage, proposed sewage utility bylaw amendment number zero five-two-three in order to amend section eight B I to increase the sewage rate by sixteen dollars or three point oh-nine percent from five dol- five hundred and eighteen dollars per equivalent user to five hundred and thirty-four dollars per equivalent user.
Thank you, Counselor Miller, it's been moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Olson, on the question. Seeing there are none? Counselor Olson, did you have a question? No. Please vote now. Motion carries six zero. Item ten B. Proposed water utility bylaw amendment number zero, or number twenty-four dash eighteen, a bylaw of the municipality of Chris Pampas respecting water utility, consideration of third and final reading. Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, your worship, whereas a notice has been published on the town of Chris Pampas website pursuant to section fifteen-three and fifteen-four of the local, local governance act and whereas proposed water utility bylaw amendment zero-two-four dash eighteen, a bylaw of the municipal, municipality of Chris Pampas respecting water utility, received first and second reading at November first, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting. Now therefore be resolved, third and final reading be given to proposed water utility bylaw amendment number zero-two-four dash one-eight in order to amend section A, the water user fee, fee fixed charge component to increase the water rate by three point two percent with the basic rate going from two hundred and fifty dollars to two hundred and fifty-eight annually with the large meters also increasing to three point two percent and schedule A be further amended by increasing the water usage, user fee consumption charge component up to ninety-six cent, uh, cent cubic meters per quarter by three point two percent from a dollar zero one nine nine to one zero five two five per cubic meter, larger meters have higher consumption thresholds. And the second level usage charge be increased from one dollar sixty-one fifty-one to one dollar sixty-six sixty-eight per cubic meter or three point two percent.
Thank you, Counselor Miller, it's been moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Olson, on the question. Please vote now. Motion carries six zero. Item eleven, new business. I don't believe there was any this evening. Uh, item number twelve, reports. We have a motion, please. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, your worship, I move that reports be received and filed.
It's been moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Olson. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carries six zero. Number thirteen, business arising from committee of the whole. Is all covered? There is none. Item number fourteen, looking for an adjournment. Counselor Olson, moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Luck. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carries six zero. Safe travels home, everyone, I hope you find joy in the rest of your week. Good night.